Okay, I will call the meeting to order. I don't have the mic that magnifies my voice tonight, so I will do the best I can. But if you can't hear me, ask me to repeat myself. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:30. And I want to start tonight with an exciting announcement from the Agency of Education. A teacher at Essex High School has been chosen Vermont Teacher of the Year. Her name, I'll probably mess it up, is, her name is Linda Clodier-Nandar.
All right. Good for her.
It's awesome.
Clodier-Nandar. Yeah.
Here, I'll spell it too.
Clodier Melbar?
Nandar.
Nandar.
C.L.O.U.T.I.E.R.
And the hyphen name is N.A.M.D. So I think that's English. I think that's pretty exciting for our district. Okay, I don't have any changes to the agenda, and I don't see visitors to be hurt. So let's move to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Brendan?
I have questions about the donation. So I'm wondering if that should be removed, so I can ask a question?
Okay. Why do I not have the donation?
To the newer one that went out.
Huh, I thought that's what I was looking at. Okay.
You want me to make a motion for the consent agenda?
Yeah, for the rest of it.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, including the items Board Minute Meetings of September 12th and September 19th, 2017, and approval of warrants.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, so we have pulled the item to accept a donation for, from Vermont Systems for the EHS Athletic Department. Brendan?
So my question is, does the district have a policy for the acceptance of donations like this one?
So there used to be a policy, and in this transition, moving to a new district and new policies, this one did not get transferred over. So we put it here for the first time, and then I do think you should have a discussion. I'm not necessarily sure that it needs a policy, but it should, I should run by the gifts and donations by you. You could make a motion to have me do that, or however you want to do it, but I don't think it's need, needs and policy exactly. You could set an amount if it is over $10,000, or, I mean, you could do it that way, too.
Is accepting donations a regular thing that we do?
Yes.
And specifically for athletics?
Probably most of them come through athletics.
And so is it a donation, like a charitable contribution, or is it actually a gift that then results in some benefit to the company? Advertising, sponsorships?
No, this is a, this is a donation.
So they don't get anything in return for the gift?
No, they actually don't even care to be noticed.
Okay.
And I said to Jeff Goodrich, "Well, it will be in the minutes," because I do want it to bring it forward.
I just know that, especially at the college and university level, the, there usually are pretty strict and tight rules around accepting donations in exchange for what's actually sponsorship of athletic, either facilities or teams or what have you. So this sounds like it probably doesn't fall into that bucket, but it makes me, it raises a few red flags for me, but I guess I would be interested to see if the district feels like it, it needs to have a policy around this kind of thing. We have lots of policies.
Right.
And it would seem strange that we wouldn't have a policy that it would, that would at least outline the process by which we accept donations. This is a company that we obviously feel good about, they're a local company, but would we accept a gift from any company or any group? So, nothing, I'm not making a proposal for anything, I'm just suggesting that it might be something to...
I, I think you make a good point. I know we don't want to put ourselves down in policy, but if we have a policy, then we won't have to keep having discussions when things come forward.
Yeah, I think the worst possible scenario would be if the board had to approve every contribution that was made, or review every contribution that was made. I don't think that's something...
We had to make a decision about something controversial when it was in front of us, instead of having considered what we want our policy to be before it's in front of us.
Yeah, exactly.
Patrick?
I'm not familiar with them. What does Vermont Systems do, and does the district do any business with them?
I actually don't know that answer. Great question.
So, I mean, I would have no problem if we had no business with them whatsoever, but if at any point we've contracted with them, then this looks bad. So I guess I would like to answer that question at some point.
Well, it doesn't necessarily...
Doesn't necessarily?
It doesn't necessarily, but there's, you know, I mean, there, people will read between lines that aren't necessarily there.
Optics.
Yeah.
Well, and sometimes, again, at the college and university level, a vendor, after they are selected as a vendor, will sometimes make a contribution to the college and university after the fact. And so that would be something I would think we would want to make sure that we have some kind of policy around.
I think as long as we're certain that they haven't been chosen as a vendor in exchange for giving us a donation, I don't, I don't think we would want to exclude our vendors from making charitable contributions to the system. Whoops, I think Martha's next.
I was going to say, I had the same basic question Brendan did, I just wanted to make sure that there's, we don't have to put a name or a banner up in the gymnasium, so I was glad we didn't have to...
You don't have to buy only Coke products.
And I, I think CCSU, I know as a Prudential Committee member, we did accept donations, and it was throughout the year, not a lot of them, but there were periodic donations, so I'm pretty sure there is a policy that we could look at from both districts.
There's definitely a policy.
And I am totally in favor of accepting donations?
Right. Let's be clear.
I just want to make sure that we have policy that protects the district.
With this donation, it's at will, choose as we see fit, as long as it benefits the Athletic Department as a whole, but it's not specifically to one team or one sport?
Nope, Athletic Department.
As a whole, okay.
Okay. All right, are we ready for a motion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of $4,700 to the Athletic Department.
So moved.
Thanks, Brendan.
Oh, is it $4,700 or $47,000?
$47,000.
Oh, never mind.
$47,000.
Forget it.
That would be something.
Let the record show, it's $4,700. Yes.
I'll retract.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, and I think I have heard Diane that we would like the Policy Committee to work on an acceptance of gifts policy.
Yep, I think we got a few that we need to look at.
Okay. All right, so tonight, we're going to have a presentation on our district's demographics and our ESPEC data. So Amy Cole, I think everyone knows Amy. Welcome, and take it away.
So I wasn't here when you put in this request, so I hope that I met your needs with the data that I put here. This is a little bit different for those of you who had me stand here in every call due data. Beth did ask that it be sort of a broader look around, sort of who are our students, and less sort of that, that micro piece about our student performance results. I'm happy to answer any questions about the performance results, and I'm happy to come back with deeper things, but our approach on this one was a little bit broader. So I hope that this meets your needs. And I don't have a mouse, so I'm just going to click here.
Do you want me to click while you...
You want to click?
Yep.
So you have a hard copy of this, and if you didn't get a hard copy, I can give it to you, and I hope that it printed in such a way that I don't cause you to squint. So just some quick facts about us as a new district. It was actually kind of fun to read this, to write this, and think, "Oh, we're 10 schools." We had a long debate about exactly how many students we have, because we've seen this number on, very different, on lots of different forms, and we were sort of blaming the complexity of preschool and CTE, and the EHS students who are CTE for the confusion. So this is the number we're sticking by for today, depending on which report you look at.
Is that, okay, so that's not pre-K kids?
We believe this includes our public pre-K students.
No, well, the 315.
That includes the 315. No, I did not.
See, this isn't a fun debate all week long.
This, we do this all the time.
The 3,835 do not include the pre-K.
But two can take the good texts.
But it does include the ones in the school-based programs?
It's, no, the 315 is the...
Total pre-K.
Total pre-K. And including...
You would think this would be easier to answer.
It's, it's not as easy to answer. The 3,835 do not include the CTE students.
They include our EHS CTE students.
It does include our Essex High School students that are enrolled.
So in other words, from the agency point of view, they view enrollment as one definition. Then when we look at our own data, and we look at the students that we're serving, we look at it in a slightly different way. So for example, we have a little bit over 100 students that are EHS students, who are enrolled in EHS, who attend CTE, and they sit on our accounts in two different ways. So we always have to kind of remember to separate that out, because there's almost 400 CTE students, 300 of which are not enrolled in our schools, if that makes any sense.
Students who attend pre-K at Summit, Hiawatha, and Westford, are they in the first number, the second number, or both?
They're in the second number. They're counted differently for the Agency of Education right now.
They're not community-based.
I know.
I'd feel more comfortable actually going back and researching this one again. We actually, four of us had to sit in a room to figure it out, or believe it or not.
So it's either stage twelve or it's pre-K. It may include the pre-Ks that are in our buildings in those mornings.
Why don't we go back? We'll, we'll give you, actually, we've seen three or four, actually, four or five different numbers. Why don't we get to all of those numbers and tell you once again? Because, no, I mean, when Beth told me that she was being interviewed for being the superintendent for the largest district, I went, "We, we were second?"
That was my question.
And we actually started with that, like, before you go off to this interview, "Are we, are we second? Does it count CTE, does it not count CTE?" So it really does come down to, depends on who you ask and which students you're counting. We're a little under 4,000 students, let's go on from there.
Yeah, let's stay with that.
We're a little under 1,000 staff members, and four, this year, 461 teachers. Thank you. Phew, that was the first slide. In terms of socioeconomic indicators, we know that free and reduced lunch does not always tell the whole story, but this is the number that we have for you today, which is that right now, we're at 22% students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And just to give you sort of an image of what that looks like, free and reduced lunch eligibility reflects an annual income of less than $25,000 for a family of four.
Except, didn't we, that's for free lunch. Reduced lunch would have a different definition.
This is a collapse rate.
Even though we treat them this way.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the 25,000 does, but the 22 represents those that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And we range from, in our schools, it's actually not a very wide range, this year, it's between 19% over in Westford, and 29% in Hiow, in Fleming, but by and large, we fall, sort of our schools are somewhere around the 24%, our district average being 22 this year. Homelessness, homelessness is, the title itself is, it's a title some folks are not super comfortable with. We have an act called the McKinney-Vento Act that defines homelessness pretty broadly. We do know that there are people who fit in that category who don't often access our services, in large part because they may not necessarily view themselves in terms of that identity, but we do typically support between 15 and 30 students experiencing homelessness each year.
Question about the Fleming having the highest percentage?
This year.
Do we see, like, cohorts of people that are worse off economically, related usually to...
No, I guess where I thought you were going was where I was going in my head, in terms of, particularly for Essex Junction, where we have such small transitions from school to school, you could see Hiawatha be 31 next year, you know, one year, and Fleming be 23, and vice versa, because families move up through the systems.
It's not like a trend of something happened in the economy, and then we'll see, like...
Since I've been here since 2011, we've been floating around 20 to 23,000. I would say that Westford kind of goes up and down a little bit at times, and this time it's a little bit on the high end, but with a low-end count, that can go up and down quite a bit. Our high schools slowly crept closer and closer to the district average.
One thing to bear in mind, though, percentages are probably going to get more acute and more distinguished as their population has fallen over the years.
It could, that could represent...
Because in Westford, I know, we're looking at a body of 180 students, so the number of students is going to be a higher percentage than it was five years ago.
Right.
It may be the same number.
Right, and those are school-based, with a larger end number, that it's a little bit more stable. The other thing, and I actually, this one was actually harder to get than I thought, and I, if I have another day, I could get it for you. The town census data doesn't sometimes match our free and reduced lunch numbers, which is a curious one for us, and there's always been this sort of wondering about, as the students get older and older, are they, are they less likely to complete that form? So typically, high schools tend to always have a lower average of free and reduced lunch than their elementary schools, which kind of violates common sense. So anyway, that's where we stand. Yes?
You mentioned, you know, Fleming and what other school, but how about the town of Essex, or how...
Pretty comparable.
Okay.
But when I, and actually, when I had to ready myself for the Consolidated Federal Grants, our allocations are based on that, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, how far off are we?", because that could kind of alter allocations. Between Essex Junction and Essex Town, pretty comparable. I think it was between 21 and a half and 22.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
In terms of ethnicity, this is our breakdown for ethnicity. We are still predominantly white, 87%. That number has been decreasing over time, but not at a huge pace. We have, and these are self-identified, so in other words, the families identify whether or not they would mark off sort of multiracial, or Asian, or black, or Hispanic. We have been increasing steadily, many of you know, for those that have been on the other end of me coming to you, saying, "Our numbers have gone up again, we need another ELL teacher." We are up to almost 300 ELL students this year. The number, the reason that this one doesn't necessarily match is because literally, they were moving in as I was putting the number here. So we currently serve 189 students that are found eligible for ELL services, I think an additional three moved in this week, and 106 that are currently in our system that have exited ELL services. In other words, they've successfully gone through the program and exited, but we keep that information on file in case they run into any kind of academic issues over time. Students in both of these categories, the families in either of these categories, often access our translation services. So in terms of staffing, we have eight ELL teachers. When I started, we had two, and now that we've combined, we're up to eight ELL teachers. They're a big group. We have one Nepali-speaking liaison, and 14 on-call translators that are serving, currently serving 13 languages. In other words, we work every year to identify which families need what kind of translation services, and some students and families speak certain languages, but they don't need the translation services. And we provide ELL summer experiences and after-school tutoring for our ELL students.
I'm sorry, I was busy signing this.
I'm a fast talker, too, so slow me down.
Okay. When I'm looking up there, English Language Learners, 289 students.
I just noticed that this number doesn't match, because I, students moved in here, and I forgot to increase my number over here.
So that should be 189?
You should have 200, and what's this number?
95. Thank you, 95. Literally, our ELL families, between June and October 15th, we tend to, at the CCSU side, experience at least 30 new students that are registering constantly, so that number doesn't kind of settle until middle, mid-October. These are the languages that are in our schools that I was able to track. It's pretty impressive, over 40 languages. You've probably been to our schools and noticed that flags hanging. It's something, I think, I'm quite proud that our school leaders and our staff have really taken appreciative lens to our changing diversity, and you'll see, I think Suzanne Grunlin called me, and she was like, "I'm so excited to get a new flag." We try to take that lens. And we do, I guess I have your ear on this one, the appreciative lens lends itself to academic services as well. I'm really proud of the high school for making the move, I think it was three or four years ago. Many high schools waive award language requirement for ELL students, and Essex High School grants award language credit. And what we do is we ask ELL students to come and say, "Would you like this to be granted on your credit?", and we work with an actful service, and they actually come and they sit, Andrew Roy manages it for us, and they perform their language to someone on the phone who assesses them and says, "You're fluent in that language," and then we award them with award language credit. So that's just an example of trying to find an appreciative approach to our changing culture. Any questions here about what these languages are? There are times I get a call from an ELL teacher and say, "I need a translator in what language? Say that again." You can see the little bit of a breakdown here, definitely Nepali is our lead right now, followed by Arabic and Vietnamese. A growing group is Somali. In the last year, we've increased pretty quickly our Somali population, which speaks both Mima and Somali-Somali, and we have a translator who speaks both. Ready? Thank you. Student Support Services, we're only going to do one slide on this one, because we know that Erin and Dylan are going to be coming to you, I think, at your next board meeting to do a deeper look at student services, but we wanted to include this in a broad overview. Currently, 592 students, students with disabilities are eligible for special education, 143 with 504 plans. Are you familiar with the term EST, Educational Support Team Plans? Which is that tier-two intervention, 446. And then just, we have a broader sense of intervention services, where we don't necessarily go through a full-on EST process, but we identify kids for short-term intervention, so another 210. This is here, just to sort of give you a sense of the types of resources and the flexibility with those resources that are required in each of the schools to meet the needs of the students. Okay, Center for Technology Essex, we currently, this year, have 389 students. I love Carrie Dickinson, because when I sent this out to her and Bob, she immediately zip-topped this information to me. So this is our current enrollment. Enrollment does continue for another few weeks throughout the CTE application process. One thing to notice is that they have, I think it's, typically, they have about 13 different feeder schools, I didn't count these up, but that sounds about right. They also serve adults with diplomas and adults without diplomas. Our highest contributor this year is Essex High School. And that they, in their current class, 70% of the students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and 46 are on an IEP or have a 504 plan.
Would you remind me how students come from outside of our catchment district to the Tech Center for Technology?
I'm going to say this because I'm fairly certain that what I'm going to say is true, and then I would want to ask Bob and Carrie for sure, because they know these regulations much better than I do. I believe that they would arrive on our doorstep if they're not, if their area doesn't provide a program. But I also think that there's a new complexity around high school choice that may have opened up some opportunities. And that last piece, I'm not entirely sure I understand how that's worked. And then we do have tuition paying students. There are students, yeah, there are students who can access it, but there aren't a lot of them.
And I was going to say, a number of those students coming from outside of Essex can and do take classes at Essex High School, such as English, other subjects.
They are unique in that they're a whole-day program. Yeah. And then this is what their program enrollment looks like in terms of the programs, and I did collapse a couple of them, just to fit it on your screen, but you can see, this year, this is what it looks like of the 389 students, this year it looks like pretext is their largest one, followed by professional foods, computer animation, web design, and building technology. I would encourage you, if you have not had a chance to get to know the CTE programs, or even have Bob and Carrie come do a presentation for you, it's pretty tremendous, the opportunities that they have and the resources for the students. And I would also say, the degree to which the staff really work to meet the needs of the individual students in those programs. These are students who come in at all kinds of hours, depending on how they get bussed in or get driven in, they may have them for a year. Their relationships with their feeder schools are tremendous on behalf of these students. Next. Okay, there you go, ESPEC scores, you've probably seen them already. They hit the paper, so they produce, everybody's been around long enough to know what ESPEC is, that's our State Assessment in English Language Arts and Math. We now have three years' worth of data. What I did is I put for you the Essex-Westford compiled, or co-mingled, so in other words, I looked, put all the schools together, and I think last spring was the first time I was able to kind of access that and look at it together against the state of Vermont. They don't, unlike NECAP, collapse them by grade level, so we have to sort of do that mathematically, what they do is they produce it publicly by grade level, which is why in some of our slides that you're going to see, you're going to see a score missing, and that's because there may be a disaggregated subgroup that has such a small number that the Agency of Education won't report it publicly. But these are our scores this year. Science NECAP scores will be out in another few weeks, we just received our verification letters today. Typically, we would have had those by now, but they're a little bit late. And on a side note, this was our last year of administering Science NECAP, we're doing a new state assessment in science this spring, it's going to be piloted, it's on the computer. We know very little about it. We hear it's coming late May, and we know we won't receive the results, or we think we won't receive the results. So we're going to have a miss of a year for science results and state assessment results.
And I did mention on the last presentation that I gave around Ed Quality Standards and ESSA that the grade 11, it will be in grade nine, ESPEC.
Yeah, so the major changes that we've, it's a whole other presentation, major changes are that ESPEC is moving from grade 11 to grade nine, so this is the first year that ninth graders will be taking a state assessment, and that's for English Language Arts and Math. Science NECAP is going away, and we're having a new pilot test that we don't know a whole lot about yet, but it's coming our way. And we've been told that we'll have a physical fitness exam coming our way this spring, and we have hopes that we'll have more information about it in the next month. See how I said that? In terms of just other data for you to look at, not all students take SAT or ACT, but those students who do, we receive the collating results, and so you can see how our students are doing against Vermont's results and US results in terms of critical reading, writing, math, English reading, math, and science. I know this is a lot of data points, just have you stare at them, and I apologize for that. We have them here, you do have them there. And keep in mind, all of these, this prior slide and this slide is a single year, I think? I know I have it on our website, I can't remember if I put a slide, when you flip, maybe I'll see whether or not I did the three-year comparison. I did not. I wanted to focus on achievement gaps, it's something that we've talked about a lot. So I looked at poverty, and I looked at students with disabilities. This year, we continue to have an achievement gap, similar to a state achievement gap for students of poverty and students with disability. It's something that we look at, it causes for conversation, the equity conversation that we have. Like I said, it's not unlike the state achievement gap. And I just picked grades three, eight, and 11 to look at. For a number of years, I was following grade 11 alone to see if we were starting to close that achievement gap, and it tended to be cohort to cohort. We had one year where the math one took a considerable improvement, but it again followed cohort to cohort. And the next one is disabilities. Students with disabilities, and Erin, Dylan, and I were talking about, in particular, math is one that we have concerns about. The challenge with this, even as it's disaggregated, what we do is we take a look at students on a student-by-student basis, in other words, students with disabilities is a pretty broad term, so in other words, this doesn't tell us that these tall students with literacy disabilities, or math disabilities, or physical disabilities. So really, when we look at this data globally, the first thing we do is drill further down. So I sit with principals, and we look at their ESPEC scores, next to how they would do on their local assessment data, next to their classroom observations, and that's where we start to really pull that out. One of the pieces that I'm particularly excited about, we were unable to do this with NECAP, ESPEC was set up in such a way that we have scaled scores, and so I'm able to see the growth of a student in a scaled score now, three years in a row, and that's been an interesting thing for us to kind of wrap our heads around which students are making at least a year's worth of growth, and what services have been in place for them.
So, should we assume that our number of students in...
Grade eight, we had less than 10.
Was too small.
And, yeah, and I thought that was wrong initially, and I thought, "That doesn't seem right," and we went out and looked, and Erin said, "Yeah," she said, "I did a similar presentation where I found last year's grade eight had a small end count that we couldn't report on for students with disabilities." And then, just the efforts, I, you know, with brainstorming, the kinds of things that I see in my work, I'm sure that there's more here, that we think about, you know, the term that I... term that I heard a few years ago was opportunity gap rather than achievement gap. In other words, what are those opportunities that our students, that we can put in place for our students? And so we think about what is, what's the access to academic and recreational activities in and outside of school, access to intervention services, flexible learning opportunities, pre-K opportunities, enrichment programs, flexible learning. So when we think that, when we look at these and we say, so what is it that we can do? We start to think about what kind of programming do we have in place to make sure that there's equitable opportunities for students? And I grabbed a couple numbers for you, if you want to hit the next one. We do have, this year, 138th grade students participating in what we're calling the EWSD Algebra Seminar. In other words, we had a task team work, high school, middle school-wide, to build a common algebra experience in our three middle schools. So we have 130 students accessing that. We do have 121 EHS students taking over 192 courses. In other words, some of them are taking more than one. They're either dual enrollment, or we work with two different vendors for online learning. 105 were non-college and 87 were college courses. We have a third, we have a third academy at the high school now. So we historically had our STEM Academy, we've had our Academy for Visual Performing Arts, and now we have our Global Leadership Academy. So 239 students are participating in one of those three academies. And we have 120 EHS students attending technical education programs here, I think, for at Burlington and the remaining 116 here at CTE. I think that might have been your last slide. I know this feels a little bit like spaghetti at the wall. I hope I met some of your requests in terms of broad information.
Dang it.
In dealing with flexible learning opportunities, I don't see the ACE program mentioned here, and they would be
And I didn't. I was literally jotting down things and catching numbers, so that's one that, yeah, we have, we have a number of programs outside of this that I didn't include in this.
Okay.
So the ACE program is an alternative program for high school students.
I just turned it, I feel like I've got a block on it, but the 121 EHS students taking 192 courses.
Have them repeat that to me a couple times.
What does that mean?
In other words, there are students taking more than one course.
They're dual enrollment or online, non-college courses.
So 121 kids, this is the way it was framed for me. I had to repeat it a couple times, but they're accessing this service. And then how many of those courses have we signed on for, 192 of them?
In the dual enrollment or online.
Right, correct. So one student may take a couple.
My son took two dual enrollment courses.
I knew there was some part of that that wasn't going straight to the top.
So can we go back to the ESPEC scores for a minute?
Yes. Which one?
Keep going. There you go. I've looked, so I've looked at data like this for many years, and what is often not helpful is to see us compared to the state or to the country.
Where have I heard that?
Because we always dramatically outperform both. What's more interesting to me is our progress year to year. And I was surprised to learn through the Essex Reporter that our ESPEC scores year over year were not great. And so just wondering when we're going to have an opportunity to discuss, to discuss the most recent performance.
Let me pull up, this one maybe helpful for folks to see. Oh, let's see, where did I? Is that too small to look at? Does that get bigger? So what I wanted to do, and this is the all students group, this is not a disaggregated group. So I wanted to see, what I did is I went backwards and I collated Westford, Essex Town, and Essex Junction together for the three through eight, rather than break them out. I do have them broken up separately. But I kind of wanted to see them together retroactively. So if you look at, a percent, almost looks like a funny thing, doesn't it? You'll see this group is three different groups of sixth-grade students. So one of the things that I do with the principals, and I do it on a school-by-school basis, is I look at this.
Right.
So while we know that the test is a little bit different, is there something going on with the cohort? And that helps us with program planning. We had a group of particular year, two-year, last year, that we looked at and said, oh, there's something kind of going on with this group. What do we need to put in front of them? We definitely saw and were disappointed by, where am I, grade 11? We were pretty consistent and then took a drop, pretty consistent and then took a drop in the same cohort. So I met with the admin team and said, what happened? You know, we gave it early this year, could that have been it? We had a snow day in the middle of them. Is it our practice of closing the school down and giving it? Was it the cohort of students? So what we need to do is look at those results against their local assessment data to kind of see, is that matching up in some way, or was it a set of circumstances that caused that? I do know that one of the decisions that the Agency of Ed made to move it from 11th grade to grade nine was based on a little bit of a hypothesis that kids might be over-assessed at grade 11. That may or may not be true. But it was, I think it was one of the factors that caused them to say, let's look at moving it to grade nine and see if that's more helpful. I am looking forward to having a consistent three through nine. I think that's kind of interesting. I don't think I answered your question.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess my larger point is, because we haven't yet gotten to the point of determining what our desired outcomes are for kids and what metrics we're going to use as sort of, you know, our standard for measuring our performance as a district, how much weight do we give these? We see alarming headlines in the local paper. You get parents asking questions about, are we, are we, you know, is our quality getting worse? So I think that this is just a slice of information. I understand it's not the whole story, but until we get to the point where we decide how much importance we're going to give ESPEC in terms of our overall assessment of our performance as a district, you know, these kind, these kind of data points can be either misleading or alarming, depending on how you look at it.
Yep. I would agree with you. And I will also say that when I work with the administrators, we look at that first number. Now, this number, English Language Arts, is actually broken down into reading, writing, research. And then what we do is we look at those scores, and then we look at the individual students to see, how does that reading score match up with their star reading assessment? Is it close? Are they, are we off in some way? And so that drill down is something that is hard to present publicly. One of the things we did last year, a number of the schools looked at, what are those multiple indicators? And then can we formalize these things matter as a conversation starter? So up in Westford, we identified two points on their progress report, two or three points on their progress report, how they're doing on their running record for reading, how they're doing on their, our local math assessment, how they're doing, if three or four of these sort of ding, that's a conversation starter. So now what do we do? What do we look at? So that is hard to present publicly. I agree with you.
Right. And how do you use this data? I might just forget. How do you use this data to actually intervene with kids that are struggling in a particular economic area?
As a program, when you say economic area?
Yeah, I mean, our ESPEC is the kind of test where you can pluck out an individual student's performance and identify a kid in need of assist, you know, assistance and support with mathematics, for example.
Yep. We can actually do that with all of our assessments. Both Essex Town and the former Chittenden Central Schools have, we have two different data systems in place right now, but both of them are set up in such a way that any data we pull in, we can pull out based on economic or free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities, ELL students, and start to look at it that way.
Right.
So not only here would we see an achievement gap, but we could see it on our local assessment data.
Right.
You know, it's on a kid, a kid basis, and it's a roster-by-roster basis. So we look at cohorts, oops, what's going on with third grade? Do we need to put something in place? What's going on with these particular students? Is this intervention working?
Right.
So some of the conversations I had, thinking of, I keep pointing at Westford, because I had this conversation with Marcy, is, so the students that made at least a year's worth of growth, they were a one last year on ESPEC. They're a one this year. But their scaled score showed that they made more than a year's worth of growth. What intervention did you use? Like, did that work? So some of those students don't budge out of those proficiency levels, but still make a year's worth of growth. Okay, what about the students that made more than a year's worth of growth? What did you do? What, what happened there? Was that a fluke to the student? Not care one year, or did you put something in place? So the power for me tends to be on those individual conversations, and then what resources are working right now? I know that for the last few years, we've been really tightening up on our tier one instruction and our tier two interventions. And what are those interventions? And are they, are they common enough that kids are hearing the same language? And is the thing that we're using actually working? This is probably more than you guys wanted.
No.
Probably all the time, right? Okay. You're good.
Al, you, I think you
Yeah, I had a couple of points.
I'll go down this.
The first point was, I agree with Brendan that the state number really had, doesn't have any relevance for me. Yeah, we see this all the time in terms of comparisons. What is more valuable is to understand, first of all, ESPEC has raised the bar in terms of performance. That it's a, that's why I understood was a tougher test, and therefore, and benchmarks in performance has gone up. At the same time, almost all of the research I've done in comparison on these scores has been at the regional level, the South Burlington, the MMU, and so forth. So I like to look at how we're doing compared with other schools, with our peer community. That gives you some specifics about which schools are doing really outstanding, and then you can ask the question, what are they doing differently than we are? And so that is much more valuable.
And we do that, too. So we have put our neighboring districts' scores standing in front of the high school faculty and said, so what's Colchester doing? So what's MMU doing? It's one of the reasons why we launched our literacy initiative a few years ago and hired Erica Lookser, our literacy coach, to put literacy, or to strengthen literacy in all classrooms and all content areas. And to look at, we put in place writing. I know both Essex Town and Chittenden Central put in place writing prompts to try to understand our students in terms of writing better. One of the things that we know is if students don't do well on their state writing assessment, they don't do well on the reading assessment, and they sure don't do well on that math assessment. So that's the tickler for us, is that we know that there is a one-to-one correspondence when they, when they struggle to write. Whether that means that that's an indicator of their math, true math ability, we don't know. But we know that on these state assessments, they need to be able to write to convey their math abilities. So that's why we look at them next to the local data to see if it's kind of ringing through at all.
So Keely?
I wish I'd brought more graphs. I have so many graphs back home.
Two questions.
Back in my office.
One which is about this conversation, and one which is about the final slide. On this conversation, I guess one thing that I've been wondering about as we transition to this unified district with 4,000 people is, like, if you've always been having these conversations about a group of, you know, 1,000, 2,000 students, do you, do you still have the time to have this conversation about 4,000 students? And if not, are there plans in place about how to utilize people who are working closer to the students to do this kind of analysis?
They do. I mean, the teachers meet in PLCs across grade levels and across content areas here, and they look at the data. Essex High School teachers are fairly hungry for data. They know, they knew NECAP was out today, and were asking me for those slice files. So they are looking at that. We're making better use of our data systems. We could improve upon that, but we have data systems that teachers log on, and they have the rosters of the kids, and they can get their data almost immediately. We always could do more. The day is long for teachers. And to slow it down and say, let's sit together, all ninth-grade teachers, and look at real assessment scores of 350 kids and make meaning of it, can be challenging. But I do think that we have increased our culture of looking at data over time. I think the challenge has always been to find at least three points. So if you look at your state data and you look at your common local assessment data, and we, and we're missing some, some opportunities for common local assessment data. And look at classroom together, does it tell you some sort of story? So this class, are they struggling as readers? Do you notice that? Well, we noticed this on the state assessment result, but they seem to be doing well on star reader. What does that say? I don't, I don't think I answered your question fully.
It does, because it's like, the teachers are flagging the people that you need to be involved in the discussion.
I will also say, my experience with the principals in these buildings are that they are data savvy. So I'm pretty impressed when I can sit down with a Suzanne Redling, and she knows every single student, that's what their scores are and what their intervention needs are. You'll see data walls in each of their offices as you go in. They're pretty, they're pretty savvy with that information. I think the harder thing is finding the thing that's going to work for that one student and making sure the resources are there.
And my question about the final slide is, we know that people on free and reduced lunch are accessing the Tech Center at like a 70% rate. But what are the levels of access for the other flexible learning opportunities?
Is equitable?
It'd be interesting to know, like, are people on free and reduced lunch getting into the Algebra Seminar or the
Yeah, I'd like to know that, actually. And that one, I think I could probably pull off finding. I'll have to go to two systems, but I think I can get it in about a quarter. Once they, once their data shows up, I'll be able to do that. The dual enrollment was, is an interesting one for me. I'm wondering if they're accessing dual enrollment courses and whether or not there's a barrier in terms of getting to dual enrollment courses. That's a relatively new kind of phenomenon for us, so I'd be curious enough who's accessing that. We also, we are experiencing a number of students who come to us who've had large interruptions in their formal education, by and large, they're ELL students. We refer to as students with limited informal interruptions, limited, students with limited or interrupted formal education or SLICE students. Students who arrive who have missed two years of formal education. And that's been a new challenge for us.
That will start to show up in ESPEC's course.
I've got Marla and Patrick.
Just piggybacking, probably on Al Brendan. When the article came out in the Essex Reporter, I worked with people that have kids at CVU, at Milton, some of the other districts. And how, how far back can we go in comparison to other Chittenden County schools? I'd be curious of how we compare in past years, so that we can see going forward, how we're
We should be able to do for three years. The state produces a SLICE file, so I'd have to just go back and find those two slice files and do that comparison. Last year, I did the comparison for all of the students who were in the proficiency levels. I did it for the average scaled score, and then I did it for disaggregated. And Essex High School kind of moved up and down depending on which
So I would just be curious if, if it's possible to get sent that info once you have it, a broad idea of how we're going, and then towards the future. But the other thing is, what I'd be curious about is not only how we stand with ESPEC and everything else, because budget's coming up, I'd be curious how our percentages are working out, that we're putting money into curriculum versus athletics. I mean, what do we do that's different than other schools? It's just not enough to look at scores to me, because I know that some kids are stay in school because of arts, or they stay in school because of music.
So who's accessing what programs?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a great thing to have, is for who we are, what we are.
I think if you all can generate a list of those questions, I'll do my best to get to that information. You know, our high school guidance department usually turns it around pretty quickly. And I can definitely get to a comparison of high school to high school for the last three years. That's how long we've been giving it.
Because I, I'm curious how we're spending our money. Should we be putting our money in different buckets coming this budget year? I mean, I just, now that we're merged, and the other thing I heard you say is, we're still operating on two data systems. When will they be the same?
So we, so we unify, the business of unifying is, it's a lot of work. So we made the decision about halfway through last year that we identified all of the systems that we were going to cause our users to have to interact with, and said, which ones can we bear the pain of keeping separately to not have to keep putting new things in front of teachers so they can focus on kids? So we knew that there was going to be a change in our student information management system and our accounting system. What am I missing? Our finance, where I said finance system, our, why am I blank?
HR.
HR system.
HR system.
So we had this conversation yesterday. Our nurses' health information system. So we did make the decision to keep VCAT and INFORM both up and running for a single year, because that is something that teachers interact with a lot. It does mean that it's harder to get data out. And it's why I said to Beth, I think I can pull off a slide for third grade local assessment reading. Just trying to pull it out of the two systems and put it together. Our goal is to have a single system next year. But we want to be thoughtful about what, about that decision. There are people who are attached to existing systems and there's new ones that have come out since both systems have looked for these systems. So we are launching that, probably just had this conversation this week about how to make a decision about a single data system because it is limiting. But we know that as leaders, we are super cautious about putting continual change in front of teachers at a time when they're experiencing so much change already. And they know how to use these. It's a bit like taking your car and handing you a, a new stick shift and saying, go.
Oh, please.
No, I've never had a stick shift.
Patrick.
So I have two things. One, Keely, I think maybe you might have mentioned this last meeting, but correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that you had had a question. We were wondering if we could get S-BAX scores that were specific to individuals who would come up through our system. Well, I realize that taking, you know, we obviously have to account for the ELL students and the students who move in who maybe have had to direct them away.
Oh, you mean that are with us consistently.
But those who are with us consistently. I'm wondering if that would give us.
I could do it for three years. I mean, that's how long we've had it. I, I had a little bit more fun with that with NECAP since we had it for a longer period of time, but I have a three-year period. I did look at transition data a few years ago. I used to have like this secret back door into the state database that closed down on me. But I was able to track kids moving in and out of the towns and try to figure out where they were coming from through the education data warehouse. And I did it actually for Essex Town as well as Essex Junction and Westford because Mark had asked me to run it. And I found at that time, I did it three years in a row, that from kindergarten to grade eight, we were losing about 30% of our kids. So that meant that as an eighth grade teacher, 70% of the kids sitting there had been with us since kindergarten. I found that it was about 15% between grade six and grade eight and about 15 to 20% between grade nine and grade 12. And that caused me to say, well, how can I track these kids who are with us to see if we're having that impact? I can try to do that, hanging on to that information a little bit harder these days. And it would only be for three years. We don't tend to have a huge transition in a three-year span, but I'll see what I can reach in and find out. Tends to be somewhere between K5 is the most movement.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then I guess the second thing, you'd mentioned hiring a literacy person a few years ago. I mean, right now, so judging from these results and from what was in the Essex Reporter, so we are sixth in English language out of the eight schools they compared. The two behind us are Burlington and Winuski who have very challenging scenarios facing them. So does that mean that this, the literacy person does not seem to be working? Are we low when we have gained ground or are we staying low? I mean, we're two in spending, but we're six behind two extremely challenging districts, so I'm just not really sure.
So to clarify, we hired a literacy coach here up at the high school. We, Essex Town has had a literacy and math coach in their K-3, 8 system for a number of years. And then we had a math coach K5 here. We've added a literacy coach here. So we actually lost our literacy coach. She became the assistant principal over at Colchester, Erica Lickler. So we don't currently have a literacy coach at the high school right now. I think your question though is sort of, did the resource kind of cause an outcome that was less than desirable?
Yeah. Did, did the action that you take get us to?
I wish it could be that simple. I don't know that I could put a single year 11th grade cohorts drop on a single individual who's charged with supporting the whole school. I can tell you that I see and experience a lot more literacy in the classroom across content areas. And that was our goal, to make sure that all content areas owned Literacy Common Core when it came out. And we were pretty strong and we had a drop this year. About six years ago, I'm looking at you, Al, because I think maybe it was my first year here. I think I started in July and the math scores dropped that November by 13 points. I said, gosh, I just got here. And then the next year went up by 15 points. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I want to be cautious about how much did we put in this for a single year? Trend is a problem. And so I have met with the team to talk about, boy, we did a very different testing context last year. We chose to do it the first two weeks, but it was, the window is open. There's a three-month window. Let's revisit that. You missed three months of teaching. We have snow day. On the one day, we shut down the school for the 11th graders to show up and we had to reschedule it. Maybe not snow season. Do we need more teaching time? The fact that it's moving to ninth grade kind of changes the conversation now because now we've just lost that cohort. Now we're going to be assessing ninth graders.
Yeah, and I, I do understand that. I guess you speaking to us as a group, people who are invested in this, understand that. When we go out to the public, they see two in spending and they see six behind Winuski and Burlington. That's not easy for us to sell.
I understand.
So I guess I'm trying to find a way in my head to connect the dots between what you're explaining here and how I'm going to explain that to someone who says, what's up?
I think there's another, there's another piece too, and that includes the curriculum. There are changes in the curriculum and between all of these different subjects. So it's possible that one grade can get a little bit behind while they're trying to make this. There's a lot of coordination across a lot of staff.
Well, we've had changes in every state standard. They just adopted new social studies once. Every, every state standards have changed in every content area since I've been here, since 2011. I don't know that I would, I think somebody said earlier, Literacy Common Core did have a ramping up of expectations. And I think that that was a good thing. I think that their expectations for the integrated reading and writing assessments challenged us in a lot of good ways. We did, you don't see it here, but we, Essex High School was one of the pilots, so they actually gave it the year in advance. So they had a year of practice and then produced some pretty decent scores. So I'm not saying that I'm not paying attention to this one drop in particular. I definitely want to look at that. I want to look at the kids on a roster level and I want to look at the context. And then I want to look at how we do as ninth graders.
So I have a demographics question. So I want to confirm, are students who are on free and reduced lunch and students with disabilities in the, the total number?
This is the all, yep.
And so what I'm not seeing in the, in the presentation is, are we, is part of the potential reason that our scores are fluctuating, is it because we're seeing a rise in these two populations in our district?
I can't because it's not, I don't have a mouse to go back to the slide.
Do we have more students in poverty? Do we have more students with disabilities?
It's been.
Having an impact on our overall scores?
I know it's gone up over the.
I, I don't feel comfortable answering the question around the students with disabilities. I wish Erin and Dylan were here to answer that one.
And we don't necessarily need to answer it here and now. I guess my, my, that's just a curiosity I have is, to what degree are the demographics having an impact on our score results if we know that those two populations struggle significantly with the S-BAX? If we've seen a jump in the population of those two groups of kids, it could be having an effect on our overall scores.
I, I don't think that we've seen a jump, I would say, a high jump in poverty in the last three years to indicate why we saw a drop in our high school scores this year. I don't think I would do that. Although I'd want to look at that particular grade, which I didn't necessarily do to see if that one is different. The slides that I can't touch right now actually were percentages of those subgroups, which is why math didn't add up to 100%. So it's 75% of the students who are free or reduced lunch, 70%, X percent of the ones that are not on free or reduced lunch. I mean, it's a good question. I think we, if, if causes you'd have to drill down again. I can't answer the question about whether or not we've seen a drop in, jump in disability. I still would caution us, the word disability is a pretty big category.
Yeah, I guess, you know, this is a very complicated and complex issue, obviously. But if we have, I think we need to have a really good handle on the kids that, that come through our doors every day. And if we, if we can understand some of these basic characteristics, it could help us with intervention even earlier. And it might also help us think more broadly as a district. Is Essex and Westford and the junction, are we seeing an increase in families and students coming into our district that have greater needs? And how do we plan for the future? You know, yeah, exactly. So I think that to me is a pretty key question. And it might not help us solve the answer for today, but it also might give us insight into like, whoa, we're seeing a, we're seeing a steady increase in these two populations that we know have greater difficulty with standardized testing.
I think too that, that what's not in here is there are students who've come to, and I, this is the anecdotal thing that we hear from our principals. There are students who come to school not ready to learn, not having eaten, aren't in poverty. And that's not kind of reflected in here. And so, you know, what, what our principals are often asking for are the resources to provide as much flexibility in intervention services as possible because we don't know who's coming through the door the next day. So student moves in, has missed two years of school, two years of school. That's one of the ones we're working with this week. What kind of services do we provide a student?
One.
Okay, I, no, I think we, yeah, I think we need to be thinking about wrapping up this conversation. I'll take two more questions. I'll, do you have your hands up and then?
Could you comment on how the turnover rate K to eight in high school has changed in the last three, four years?
Students or staff?
Students.
Say turnover rate. In other words, they're moving out of our town?
Well, there has been a huge influx of refugees. There's been multiple ESLs. Prior to that, to that time period, it seemed like we were in a much more stable mode. And, and there are all these additional needs, the translators, bringing the parents onboard. It seems to me that this influx and ongoing turnover rate has an effect.
I know as your ELL coordinator that we have had a, a large increase in English language learners. And English language learners are a broad category from a student adopted, a student who's had formal education, a student whose parents are literate, students who aren't, or just refugees to interrupted students. That whole category is pretty broad. That number absolutely has gone up. I can't speak to students with disabilities, but I think if you can generate the questions, I know Erin and Dylan would do that. In terms of poverty, our number has not jumped. But I do know that Erin and Dylan could certainly speak to the increase in mental health issues that we're addressing in our community. I don't know so much about transition in and out of the town. It's harder for me to answer that one. But I think if you could generate any of those questions and get them to Beth, we'd be happy to answer them. They always cause us to be more curious. As soon as you get an answer, you want another answer. And we do the same thing. So we welcome those questions.
So send those questions to me and I'll collate them before I pass them on. Kim?
I was just going to, we spent a lot of time talking about the 11th graders popping in terms of concern. I noticed the sixth grade English Language Arts and the fifth grade math. And I tried to sort of look back diagonally at the cohort. And in both cases, there was a very dramatic drop off in both trend and cohort. And I was wondering to what extent and how that's something to be addressed.
Yeah, one of the things.
What your process would be around that.
One of, we did, we worked with a lot of consultants in literacy and math as literacy, as literacy and math Common Core were coming in. And we were warned that sixth grade was a big bump up in terms of rigor expectations. And so to expect that on the S-BAX, that, that would feel like a big jump for kids. So that, in particular, when we look at that five, six piece, we're reflecting on, is that that rigor piece or is there something kind of going on?
Was that just this year? So that changed this year?
No, no, no. That when we first adopted it, that piece, that sixth grade piece in particular was going to be a bump up.
But we dropped from last year to this year dramatically in sixth grade in English Language Arts.
Is that on one of them?
Yeah.
Hold on, I may have turned it off. Looking at from here to here?
The sixth, just the sixth grade English Language Arts. I mean, maybe it's not so dramatic.
This way or you're going along this way?
Both ways. It was one that stuck out for me because we went from 70 over three years to 64. Significant, not huge from year to year, but I just.
But it's a trend we walk with.
And then looking at them as a cohort and going diagonally, I was like 71 to 64 was concerning.
Yeah, so this is a curiosity. Now again, this is co-mingle. It's more helpful when I can do it by school and then schools can look at their, see if there's something going on.
And then similarly, we dropped 10 points in fifth grade math from 2016 to 2017, fifth grade math.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Fifth grade math.
Yeah.
We did a big drop and a big down again.
Diagonally backwards, they were consistently 56, 56, and then 49. So I just, that stuck out as me as a cohort and a grade level concern. And I just didn't know, as you guys look at this and dive into it, you just spent a lot of time talking about the 11th grade. So just understanding a little bit more maybe about, and you don't need to share that with us now, but maybe later process and, and maybe before we get to budget, how and what you guys are seeing and what you think.
Yeah, we haven't had a lot of time with these.
The only other thing I see is the bigger it gets, the bigger the district we are, the more, the larger number of kids, it's actually harder to extrapolate that. When I go back and look at each of the three middle schools, I start to see, is there something going on in that cohort? You know, is it a cohort or is it a curriculum issue in a particular building? Which is harder to see when you co-mingle it.
I guess the, the last thing I would say, Amy, is I'd be concerned about us putting a lot of emphasis on grade 11 scores compared to other districts in Chittenden County. Can you look at like grade three, grade six, grade eight compared to other schools in Chittenden County?
Yep, that, that SLICE file allows us to do it. I've also collapsed it. So three through eight here, we've been consistently about 70%. This is a little bit lower in terms of math. And so I'd like to collapse it also that way and look at schools across the neighboring districts.
I've been curious what their, is a school district issue? Or if perhaps it is an issue of when we gave the test interruption that happened? The fact that we've had a, always had a hard time, and this would be true in all high schools, getting kids to take it seriously because they have so many tests in that year that do make a big difference in their future.
And we're going to lose the longitudinal data anyway.
Just saying. You know, some of the other philosophical reasons that we think it's difficult to evaluate 11th grade kind of go away. So that's why I think the other grades stuck out for me a little bit more.
Okay, thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Give you your agenda back and thanks for letting me talk to them.
Board members could send me questions as they think of them. I'll pass them along. Okay, so our next discussion is defining, understanding equity. And Beth sent us a series of articles and also, if I can find it, some questions for us to ponder as we read those articles. So I think it would be good to use those questions to frame our discussion. Does that make sense to you? Okay. So before we do that though, I would just ask a general question. Did you feel that the article or articles helped you better understand the difference between equity and equality? I thought Beth did a nice visual a few meetings ago, but I thought this added some breadth to that, so. Good. All right, so Beth gave us a series of questions to think about as we read the articles. And let's just go through those and see what kind of discussion we can generate. So the first question was, what assumptions do you think the author has? Anybody want to start?
Are we discussing just one of the articles at a time or?
No, I, I was thinking we do all of them. So I, I thought about that question across all the articles.
So what assumptions do each of the three?
Each of the articles, yes, exactly.
I guess one of the assumptions that I noticed in at least one of the articles was that spending more money on education equals better outcomes. It was one of the assumptions that I think the author's made. And sometimes they backed it up with data. And then sometimes they compared us with international schools, which is, is always for me a dicey comparison. But that was one of the assumptions that I noticed throughout the articles is that more money on, on education means more, more and better outcomes.
Okay, Keely?
I think you were talking about the third article, which I think was the mediest. I felt like the first two sort of were just riffing on that good graphic. But the third one really got into data, which unfortunately, the most recent data was from when I was in school. And, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of places in this country still where they don't have the Vermont system of giving any money whatsoever to places with low property taxes.
Right.
So I think in most of the country, that's a very correct assumption.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Because there are people who are living in poverty and therefore they get no money for their schools and they can continue to live in poverty. And that's, I think, the best thing about our state funding formula is that it sort of puts a baseline of some money.
Right.
Levels the field.
Isn't necessarily good enough.
Right.
And people who have a lot of money don't always do enough with it.
Right, yeah.
Here or elsewhere. But yeah, I, I think that's a pretty valid assumption. But, yeah, I, I think that's a pretty valid assumption.
And that, the assumption being also that the gap doesn't need to exist, and that whole third article suggesting that looking at programs and well-researched programs that support innovative approaches and creative solutions, so, so when, if we, well, we'll wait till we get to the aspire question, but I think there, there was an assumption that, that, that gap doesn't need to exist.
Yeah. And education can make the difference.
And then, across all articles, the question about the access to opportunity and, and framing the conversation around how greatly that impacts the students, just the access to, to that.
Right. Other her assumptions, Patrick?
I think all of the articles began with the assumption that the massive amount of people even today are going to assume that equal is what we should be striving for. I think that was like the opening phrasing in the first two articles, in fact, they were, they were like, I've spent most of my life believing that equality was everything. I think that that's a hard wraparound, but I think it's true that most people assume that if everyone has equal X in the classroom, that they should be seeing equal scores coming out of it at the end.
Kim? I think it was the assumption as well that the floor would be raised versus the bar being lowered, and that can be a challenge around the conversation broadly, when people don't understand that somehow it's taking away from one to provide for another. And I felt there was a consistent strain that spoke to the idea that it was about raising the floor.
Diane?
I guess I could, I was trying to get beyond the assumptions of that, I could, each, each of them was saying that, yes, you can raise, raise the floor, but what happens if somebody's already up on the stepladder, and that's where they start, so we should just leave them there? None of them addressed what happens if somebody's way beyond where they already are. Yes, there's a gap, that somebody is in the basement, but what happens if somebody starts on, at floor four? Yes, that person needs to come out of the basement, up to at least to where, where, let's say, the first floor is. But what happens if somebody starts at the fourth floor? Do we leave them there because they're already there? And I, and each of them didn't address that. Okay, we have individuals who are on the fourth floor, as well as somebody's in the sub-basement.
So, we're talking-
You know, what do we do with, and then, there was, there was no addressing that assumption, that there was nothing, they made assumption that you don't, or I didn't hear anything that said, what happens if somebody's already on the fourth floor?
So, how, how would you expect an article about equity to have addressed that?
I'm not sure exactly. I think it's probably a discussion that's greater than that, that, that really great graphic, okay, sort of thing, but anyway, when I look at that graphic and going, well, what happens if somebody's already on that high box, you know, they're not the short person that needs the high box to have that, that outlook? What happens if they're already there? And, and I see frequently, if that kid's already reading, we don't need to, and I'm going, wait a minute, you know, they should be allowed to excel to their potential, okay, versus just because you've already got the average potential, why are we leaving you there? Are we doing that kid as much injustice as right not recognizing an achievement gap? Because yes, we see that, we can measure that, but we can also measure that achievement gap for that individual. So, as we're going into individual performance plans that are coming up, I'm looking at going, well, everybody's not, they're not all 11 play a field, okay, so how do we, how do we allow that opportunity to be equalized or equityized, in this case, for each individual, not just across a peer group, but for each individual? And I didn't see, there was an assumption that that wasn't addressed for me.
Well, I, I think the authors didn't have that particular problem in mind when they wrote the articles. Kelly?
Just to respond-
Or challenge.
To respond to Diane, Vermont definitely, in general, seems to have less interest in, for instance, gifted education initiatives than where I grew up, but I think there's probably also educational solutions that can lift everyone at the same time, and it would be a good thing if everybody ended up standing on top of the fence in that graphic, you know, and I, I'm not currently doing this, but I used to interview Essex High students for my alumni association, who wanted to apply to my alma mater, and I spoke to one student a couple of years ago who was running the peer tutoring organization here at Essex High, and that just was a great opportunity, both for her to learn more by teaching and the other people in that organization to learn more by teaching, and also to help people that needed extra help. So, any ways that we can support those types of learning initiatives, I think would both help equity and equality at the same time.
That's a great point. All right, let's move on to the second question. What did you agree with in the articles?
I mean, I agreed under the section of the third article, how can we reduce the equity gap? All of the steps, most of them research-based, sounded exciting to me and promising. Not for this question, but later, you know, I kept sort of trying to figure out, how do, how should I read these articles in the context of our district? And are some of these solutions applicable or not to the situation that we're in? But, but that was a part of the article that I really found myself nodding vigorously as I read it, so.
Yeah. Other things that people agreed with? Kelly?
Especially that, in that section that Brendan mentioned, the emphasis on early access to quality education. I mean, it would be great to see how all of these things, initiatives that he spoke about have matured over the last 20 years. I would imagine that many of them have suffered cuts to their budgets, because where money is being spent today is very different from where it was 20 years ago, and so much more has had to go to supports for special education and stuff that sometimes innovative programs haven't made the way through. But I think in Vermont, Act 166 is a really great opportunity, but we need to make sure that the people who need it are getting access, at least at the same rates as average, because I know things like taking my son to Summit Pre-K was an absolutely wonderful experience for him and all the other kids in that class, but if I were like the sole breadwinner for my family, there's no way I can take my kid to 10 hours a week of childcare.
Yeah, right.
You know, he would be with some home daycare provider who may or may not be good at teaching.
And there, in fact, almost exists, as I think about that part of that law, the greater capacity for creating a bigger gap by virtue of the fact that those who can access it-
Yeah.
-are going to, and those who can't are that much further potentially behind.
I mean, there are, there are some people who are accessing it.
Not that it shouldn't exist, but they're a means testing on that.
There are some people who are accessing it who otherwise would have less-
Yeah, absolutely.
-good quality-
Yeah.
-access, and that's great. You know, people who are shift workers and they can manage to find a way to get their kids there, and people who are English language learners, and even though there's not ELL support, they're coming because, I think it was Mrs. Grumling explained that, like, they have somebody in the office who will talk to you for long enough to get your kids signed up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the opportunities can be created, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee full utilization of the opportunities.
Well, and I think the state is, is gonna look at that. I think, you know, when you have principals who are really cognizant of the community, lots of times, they can help make sure that kids access the services who really need it. And it can be an advantage in Vermont that we're small enough that we can have those relationships. What have we, what else do you agree with?
Well, I would say that each of the articles essentially said, you know, we should be providing for each to have what it takes to be successful, whatever that means to be, you know, that, that, that should be provided, or there's an assumption that that's, that's what we're all talking about for equity, is get, getting each individual to have what they need to, to be, if it's the opportunity or, or supports or whatever, whatever it takes.
Kim? I also agreed in the premise that all students can learn and be successful, and in looking at it, sometimes when folks may be less invested in it, or thinking about it as deeply as board members and educators do, can seem as though, well, some of those kids just are not ever gonna get there, and you dismiss it as not being a responsibility. And I felt as though there was an assumption that all kids can learn, and successful systems build from that.
Let's move on to, what part of the articles did you wanna argue with?
I don't know if it's an argument.
Waiting for you to raise your hand.
He's got a big list on his head.
I don't know, can you tell I like to argue?
Yes, I know.
I'm not sure it's an argument, but under equity versus equality, eliminating opportunity gaps in education. As I'm reading this, I have a hard time. I'm white, you know, I live in a community, I know we've got a lot of English learner, English language learners moving in, lots of different nationalities, but there was a sentence here, "As a career educator, the conversation about gaps in educational achievement, particularly the disparity between underserved populations, children of color, poverty, and with disabilities, as compared to counterparts who are white, Asian, and from better socio-economic circumstances." I'm just curious, because I'm reading an article, and I'm sitting here, and I'm a white person, and I'm curious why the Asian, you know what I mean, the, the Asian piece, like, was, is there any information on that? What makes the difference between a white person, Asian person, you know?
Kelly?
In some parts of the country, Asian students perform at higher rates even than white students. So, for instance, in California, affirmative action in universities has meant that it's hard to get into a state university if you're Asian. It, I think, is a really odd comment in our community, because there are a range of Asian people, and people who are coming from Nepal, or Cambodia, or Laos-
Yeah.
-have suffered a lot of oppression, they're coming in poverty, compared to somebody who is coming from Japan, or someone who, their ancestors came from China like 120 years ago, and they're in California. Like, people's view of Asians in America as a whole is very different from people coming from Southeast Asia to America in the last 15 years.
So, I had a hard part with that whole piece, 'cause I know they usually do perform better. So, is it because of, so how much is it of opportunities we've given people, or what is it the, the ethics that come from within the family? It's that whole range of ethics, because where I work, I see an Asian family come in, or Nepal, and they are so, they take care of each other, they live in the same household, and you don't see that with everybody anymore, and they, you know, like, they really take care of those grandparents and, and make sure they're taken care of, and the little kids that come in, they treat those people so special, so I just wish I knew how we get those ethics or those qualities across in our schools.
Cultural aspects as well.
How, how do you, you know?
I, I think the other question is, especially with nationalities or different groups that are coming into the US, what will be the next generation, as far as will they continue with what they came in with, or will the next generation depart from their values?
That'll be, and then, there was one other part. It's on, there's a piece that talks about a major barrier to equity in the education system is largely grounded in the beliefs of those who manage the system. Teachers and leaders must firmly believe that creating equitable learning environments is a need, and not based on the myth of meritocracy?
Meritocracy.
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 A distribution of resources according to merit. And what this made me think of is, so you have children that are doing well. I, I read this to mean, if you have a child at 8th grade graduation or high school graduation, is that wrong that you pick out a valedictorian is?
No, that's, I didn't, I didn't read it that way.
I took it that way.
Interesting.
Sorry. I'm responding a lot, just 'cause I've thought about these issues a lot, like, I guess, I just got a new job, I'm very excited about it. It's an awesome job, I'm working remotely for this marketing company, they're paying me great. I got it because I went to high school with the guy who runs the company. And I went to that high school because I had really good grades in a place that had, like, gifted programs, and I did well in school because my mom invested everything in teaching me, and I didn't have to, like, work after-school jobs, and I had two parents, and if I believe that I got this awesome job because I'm better and I deserve this job, and like, people who don't make as much money, or like, have to work more hours or something, like, aren't as good as me, and they're not as smart, like, that would be a, because I had a lot of advantages that were external to my own abilities that brought me that opportunity. It was being the right place at the right time, and, you know, it's not because I'm awesome.
Congratulations.
I'm excited that I have a job at that.
So, I read it as in the school system, as if the students are doing well, that we shouldn't be giving them extra special attention or the credit.
I didn't read it that way at all. I read it as the difference between saying, we're gonna provide this math curriculum, and who does well, who works hardest, that there's no need to recognize the fact that everyone's not coming to the table with the same background, and so, it's a difference between saying, it's enough just to put this out here, as opposed to, it's not enough, and you have to recognize what opportunities you have to provide to make the situation equitable.
I guess one of the, one of the parts of the articles at the top of this page, where it states, "We cannot wait for US society to solve its problems of racism and economic inequity. We can and must take action now." And while I think that's incredibly noble and, and absolutely spot-on, it also made me really depressed in the moment to think that schools have to go it alone, and that we can't sort of figure out how to come together as a society around this challenge. This is not an insurmount, 20 years ago, this article came out, and the answers are here, and we have not followed them as a society. And so, it sort of made me feel sad that, you know, we often talk about how schools are expected to take on more and more and more of things that maybe- of things that maybe were typically handled by a family or a church or what have you. And it just seems that more and more, the the schools are becoming the place where society is expecting us to fix all the problems, and we're not thinking bigger around how if we worked together, rather than just leave it to the schools, seems to be sort of a common theme. So, that that kind of made me feel depressed, I guess.
It's interesting that you say that, because what I wrote down for this question is, "Do we expect too much of schools?"
Right, right.
And I think we have to do everything we can, but we aren't the only influence.
Right, right.
Can we solve everyone's problems?
Well, it just made me think of how many missed opportunities there are if only we had, we had decided as a society to make this a priority and to not just leave it to schools to figure out.
In place more social.
Um, I think, sort of, um, piggybacking off of that, the idea that maybe schools are the safest place or the most common place for kids with the least opportunities to access this broader range of things. So, it continues to be put upon the schools, but maybe there's a place for us to gain voice around the the support that comes around the school districts from whether it's healthcare or Health and Human Services. And that conversation has been stagnant for a while. It keeps coming up. It's a recognized challenge, and I can't help but continuing to come back to the reality that sometimes the schools are the place that these services should be brought to bear, but not by ourselves. And I don't know, I would invite us to think about where there is room for us to bring voice to that issue and see what, the part we could do, maybe, in getting some wraparound support that isn't just purely borne financially by our district or schools in general.
Right.
Okay, let's move on to the last question, which is, what part of the text do you aspire to?
Well, you know I'm thinking about it. I I think the most, I do support the author's contention here that equity is is definitely the way we have to consider. And I reflect back on about three years ago, when Jack Bellendorf and I and Vince Gennello, the IT, looked at one of the barriers, the poverty barriers here, and we looked at how students have transitioned from a regular classroom to the way our computer systems work, how education is being delivered, how they're gathering content. And it was really striking, and the work that Vince did, to come up with an innovative solution that leveled the playing field for poverty and non-poverty students. And I was talking with Amy about it tonight. It's an innovation that she's using in ELL very successfully. So, I I think, um, there are ways of of achieving that goal. But I think you need to consider, what are the factors? What are the limiting? Where can we get involved? And that takes a lot of thought and a lot of, that's where the heavy load comes in. But I support the author. I I think that maybe, maybe a working committee of this board should, you know, be be looking at innovation across the country and bringing some ideas back to the administration or whatever, you know.
Well, I'm not sure that's our job, but.
Well, it's good idea.
I think we should be asking our administration to look at innovative ideas that are research-based and proven to work.
Right.
You know, what Amy talked about so much tonight about using data to figure out what does work. To me, that's what's really important.
Innovative will come out in our vision.
It was a conversation that started quite by accident. It was just through the insight watching over the years, all of these things that are changing and moving ahead. And from that, just discussion and ideas, it's it's really changed and it's evolved. And so, I think there's a real opportunity here to level the playing field in at least one major area.
Liz, what did you aspire to?
Um, I really liked the kind, the idea of changing the conversation from the achievement gap to the opportunity gap, changing that bonus on from the student you're not achieving to the district, how can we, you know, help you achieve? So, that that was one for me. And then, um, uh, just to what Brendan said, to make, how do we make those, all those suggestions that came out twenty years ago? But this is why, to look at those, the research and those programs and really figure out how to fund the ones that are working and how to make some of those things a reality instead of bullets on a, on a, at a board table twenty years after it was written. So, there's that. And then, then the third thing I just would add is that when I was looking, when we were looking at for an equity definition to use for the Voices for Education work, we have, it's in your packet somewhere. I'm happy to share. There's a long definition and and at the end, it it, it challenges us as us, as public, in the world of public education, to think of inequity in these ways, and I'll just read them to you, which are societal, socioeconomic, cultural, familial, programmatic, staffing, instructional, assessment, and linguistic. And when we think about all of those inequities and how that's, how education is being delivered to our kids, I just think it's interesting to keep those in mind. If anybody wants that definition, I'm happy to share it. But it's, it was a takeaway for me to think about within the school building. When I think about equity, it's usually on a bigger, it's not so specific to education. And so, this helps to keep me focused.
Other things that people aspire to, Patrick?
I really liked the point about, uh, they made about that graphic that we see everywhere with the fence. Um, but when they made the point to whether or not we should think bigger as to whether or not there should be a fence at all.
Yeah.
Um, you know, which I think we're kind of starting to do with the proficiency-based stuff. We're changing the idea of what it means to get an education. And I think that that's exciting, and I think that we're kind of starting to do that now, or at least in this last couple of years, where it's no longer, you know, when I went to school, it was A, B, C, D, E, F, and then you got your diploma and then you were off to college. And if you weren't one of those people, then you were stuck in the Northeast Kingdom fixing cars for the rest of your life.
True.
Brendan?
So, this article, and I may be saying that, I may be saying what Liz just said, but differently, so I apologize. But, um, I am inspired to do an equity audit. As we're, as we're merging our districts, what are some of the gates that we have built that hinder equity for students in terms of their opportunity for education, their ability to participate in various activities or extra extracurricular activities? It just, that got me thinking a lot about how are we, just through our own systems and design, artificially either enhancing or creating inequity for students? You know, doing some kind of a, maybe, you know, high-level audit at first and then start to get, start to drill down. But that could really be a very powerful exercise, to think about some of those self-created barriers that we've built, maybe without even realizing it, that are perpetuating or enhancing inequity.
Totally agree.
I aspire to the distinction between at-risk and at-promise. I don't like the phrase at-promise, but the idea of not seeing somebody who has difficult circumstances and thinking, "At risk? What interventions do I need?" But just like with any other student, how do I enhance the student's potential? And yes, part of that will be the interventions to deal with the risks. But you have to go beyond that to really nurture the student.
I was a very big proponent of going from under a half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. And I've been wanting for years for pre-K to be in the schools. I think ten hours is a good start, but I do feel schools are the safest place. And I I liked the part of the article that says, "Start early." I think if we can get our hands on the kids sooner, and if we have a great program and if we can get hold of the children, we'll keep them in our community longer so we have consistency. I think it's like a catch-22 there. You know, the better, the the better we can do this for all and keep people here, the safer the community. You know, the most consistent. So, I wished we had a ton of space and could just afford to put pre-K in next year.
With a declining population, we might have enough space.
That's what.
Not necessarily enough money.
Chance may work in our favor.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else? Beth, do you want to make any comments about what you've heard?
I was definitely writing down what you aspire to, and they're actually all things that I've been thinking of, especially the equity audit. I think I've spoken to both Martha and Kim about that in my conversations about, um, I think, I think it's necessary. I appreciate you, the things that you argue with and to listen to that, and it was great. I purposefully sat back to listen instead of throw out my two cents every now and then, which I wanted to be patient and have larger ears than a larger mouth and listen. And and it was great. Thank you for a great conversation. It does help me in planning and thinking ahead and what we need to, what we need to do. Thank you. I think Amy's setup with the data was good, perfect timing. It wasn't as purposeful as I would have liked to have said, like, wow, that goes together so nicely. Intentional.
It's a part of what we focus on.
Absolutely.
I really liked having this exercise. I think it's been a way of getting to know the board besides just the annual work meeting or our vision meetings. I think this has been great for me. I don't know if it has been for everybody else, but I like having some things to read and bring back and learn.
Think about learning together.
Yes.
Thank you, Beth.
That's part of.
So welcome. Thank you for wanting to do it.
Talking about, yes. Okay, let's see if we can be efficient with the rest of the meeting. Testing, communications.
I can be real efficient. Well, maybe we'll split it into two. I'll do the VFE update and you can do, if there's anything else about, not really.
Yeah.
So, the big communications work is the Voices, and tomorrow is showtime. So, uh, we have.
Good luck.
Thank you. We have fifty-two community members who are participating in this over the next eight nights, which is fantastic. We have people, we have three out of our five state legislators who are, who are taking part. We've got board members. We've got students from Westford, students from all, all of the communities. We've, we've just got a really great sample and we're really excited at this. Conversation sizes are ten to twelve. There's five of them running. And, um, and each, each group has a parent adult student facilitator to run it. The facilitator training was fantastic, and I think all of us are feeling really confident. Kim is facilitating one. Brian Donahue is also facilitating one. The kids are really excited, I think, the the students to be part of this. And I'm just really excited about what we're going to find as we dive deeper into this. And it's been a tremendous amount of work, and thanks to everybody who's been doing that. And Beth has been, all of you have been really helpful in in supporting these these efforts. And we're really looking forward to, I'm really looking forward to reporting back in two weeks after these two weeks have gone. So, um, yeah, yeah.
Great. Questions for Liz? Okay, um, Marla, superintendent evaluation testing.
Our superintendent evaluation task team met, and I believe you received the job description. And, um, the next process is we're tentatively meeting on October seventeenth. And, uh, Martha is mapping, um, some of the job description pieces into an evaluation model.
A tool.
A tool, evaluation tool, model, I think.
So, I would just add that we looked at a number of superintendent job descriptions. We looked at state law, um, and we put things together. I think what we would ask is that you spend a little time with the job description. And, um, if you have comments or questions or you think something's missing, send them to me, and the committee will consider your thoughts. Diane?
How did the job description handle us? By email?
Yes.
It came later today.
It was part of the, um, thread.
The updated agenda.
This was a meeting package.
I think.
It was attached to an email by Beth.
Yeah, Beth sent an email with an attachment.
Maybe it was a separate email.
It was, it was ten-three-seventeen EWSD School Board Meeting Package.
So, it was in the package?
It was a reply to the package that originally got sent out, and then, and then Beth replied to all of them.
A link to a Google Drive document.
Yes, send it to me again.
How about that?
Okay, any comments now about the job description?
Do you want to put a date on when we'd like feedback back by? Because we are coming up to November, the formative evaluation.
Right, so I would say before the seventeen, for sure. The sooner the better. Okay.
I can't scroll down. It's spinning for some reason.
So, the next thing is proxy voting at the VISP, VI, and the SBA meetings.
So, at these meetings, only one person from the board can vote. And we have to sign certificates for the VISP and VI meetings for who's voting. And then, um, I think for the PSE, the SBA meeting, we just have to have decided. But it will be helpful if we go to those meetings knowing who it is. So, I guess the first question is, who's definitely going? So, I'm going to the SBA, but I'm not staying overnight.
I'm not, I'm just going.
The, the VI, VISP meetings are Friday morning.
At seven, right?
Seven thirty and eight or something like that. They're early morning meetings. So, um, of the people who are going, who might be interested in being a proxy for the board, having that?
I don't mind doing it. I mean, I don't have a burning desire if Andre wants to, but.
It was a real thrill last year. And last year was more thrilling.
I was there.
That actually was more thrilling last year.
That was when Martha, Martha, excuse me, Martha got sick. And I was the only other Prudential Committee member there, so I got stuck with the voting. And it's my first year, and I'm like, I'm just going to do what Andre does.
It means going to the meeting early.
I notice I'm not going this year.
The early morning meeting. Yeah, because you get sick every time you go to like morning.
Put my back out. The year before, last year, I got the flu. I'm telling you.
Yeah, you should stay away.
My husband said that he was tired of me spending taxpayers' dollars.
He got sick.
Okay. So do we have to send these or do we send them with the person?
I think you bring them to the meeting. We had an issue with that last year. So remember?
Had to be there in advance, didn't it?
Okay, so they have to get sent.
Yeah. Maybe photocopy them just in case and then we'll... Photocopy, I'll email them and I'll send them.
Then you can send them to Patrick. Everybody will have them.
We brought it by hand, but we hadn't done it before and it was an issue.
So I think I can sign them. I think I just have to put your name on them. Okay. So then the second question is, who's going to vote at the VSBA meeting, which means voting on the resolutions and the business agenda of the meeting? Who would be interested in doing that?
I am not going to because I will have a pressure role.
I'm happy if I keep it consistent.
I'm okay either way. If you want to pudge into that one, too.
I will be there. Shall we let Andre do it since you're doing the others?
The SBA portion?
We'll sit together so we can whisper if we need to. Okay, great. So I guess we need to take formal action. So I'll entertain a motion that Patrick Murray be our proxy for the VIH Health Meeting, the VISP meeting on unemployment, and the VISP meeting for multi-modality insurance.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. And I'll entertain a motion that Andre be appointed to vote on behalf of the Essex Westford School District at the VSBA Annual Meeting.
So moved.
Ken's made the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. I think we're at... I gotta find my agenda again.
It's still spinning. You're almost caught up, Martha.
I bet you if we pull the screen, we get that.
I just haven't used my agenda. Okay. So the next board meeting is on October 17. Is there anything that needs to go on the agenda that Beth and Kim and I won't think of?
Are we going to have the final job description for the board to consider?
Yeah. And the instrument, hopefully. I mean, they won't get the instrument before that night. So Brendan?
I'm curious as to what the board should expect with regard to proposals regarding the future of student transportation in the district. I know we talked about November as being sort of the timeframe of delivery for that. I guess I'm a little concerned that it's just going to arrive and we'll have one meeting to sort of consume it all. So I just would like to understand a little bit more about what the process will be leading up to a presentation of, or even a recommendation of options.
Do you think the community should know that process or for just the board?
Well, I think that as a board member, I'm interested about the process. And if the community knows as well, that's a win-win, I guess. I just am a little curious as to how that process is going to roll out so that the board can make a decision on whatever the ultimate proposal might be in November.
So maybe either Brian can address it at the meeting on 17 or he can send some memo at some point to talk about. The advantage of talking about it is at the meeting, it's then it goes onto the tape and so forth. So...
And I think too, the question of process would help us know whether we'll have it just once and all at once for consideration or is it's going to come with an opportunity to reflect and come back to it.
Right.
Yeah. So it makes sense to just have this. What's coming up?
Any other agenda items? Okay. Takeaways from this meeting?
Amy calls presentation.
Yeah.
Board learning conversation.
Equity discussion.
Equity versus equality.
That'll be fun to sum up in.
Good luck with that one, though.
Just put the picture.
Yeah, the picture. I need a copy of that graph.
And then you can slip...
Equal words for the description.
You can Photoshop us all in there like smashing on the fence.
Very powerful. It's like the Berlin Wall coming down.
What was I going to say? Do you want to put something in the notes about the teacher who was chosen as the former teacher?
Just spell her, right.
I think the more her places we can.
Is there like a public announcement scheduled or...
She was a parking space.
Is there a press release?
There was a press release. We had to wait to announce it until this afternoon or this morning. It was like about 11 that it was... It was supposed to come out yesterday and I'm glad that I checked with the Agency of Education before we said anything. Ben will do his work on communicating it out as far as we go in our district. Amy and I went to the faculty meeting today at the high school and Amy presented her with flowers and Rob announced it. It was nice.
Excellent.
So Patrick, I'm sending you the announcement from AWE, hopefully. So you'll have that.
Thanks for doing that, Pat.
My pleasure. I have a break from planning pumpkin carving. I have like 400 pumpkins and need to get carved.
Okay. So are we good with the takeaways?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Then I believe we're at executive session. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations and...
Employee...
Employee...
Discipline?
Discipline is how it is called. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brendan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Because we will retire to the conference.
Thank you, Ari Tan.